Good evening and welcome to the April 27, 2015 Organization Meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the reading of the invocation. The words of former Illinois Governor and U.S. Ambassador to the United States Adley Stevenson come to mind this evening. He once said of patriotism that, quote, "Patriotism is not short frenzied outbursts of emotion, but the tranquil and steady dedication of a lifetime." This evening, as is our tradition, we swear in the newly-elected leaders of our city, and we will select a mayor for the coming year. We pray for our leaders tonight and thank them for their patriotism and commitment to civic life. We pray for that tranquility and steady dedication that Governor Stevenson spoke of, and ask that our leaders be guided by the principles which have made our great nation what it is today. We are blessed to have a community that is engaged and involved in the affairs of this city, but we pray that more of our neighbors become involved and aware of the decisions that impact us all. We pray for the numerous individuals who had a role in these last elections because they helped set the tone for debate and discourse in our city. Lastly, we pray for the people of Baltimore tonight as they endure the civic unrest, and we pray for the people of Nepal who have experienced a devastating earthquake. Let us keep those who are facing adversity and tragedy in our thoughts even as we pray tonight for our own prosperity. We pray for all of this and for peace and harmony now and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Reading of the Report of the Clerk. The agenda for the April 27, 2015 Organization Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, April 24, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Number two on the agenda is Mayor's Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And next is Mayor's Welcome. Okay, welcome.[168.56][168.56](Laughter). No, really, welcome to today's meeting. I'd love to have the opportunity to approach each and every one of you and shake your hands and welcome you here today. It's a very, very special meeting because today is the manifestation and the ultimate end point of the American democratic process, at least for the next electoral period, in the city of Glendale. We are at a point of transition. We are going to be ushering in our new council members, and we're going to be saying goodbye to a council member, and we will have the election of the mayor. I, as many in the audience, am an immigrant, and I come from a country where, Soviet Union specifically, where democracy was a word that was used, but it was a hollow and meaningless word, meaningless word, where people's rights were not respected at all. When democratic elections, democratic elections, were held, they always resulted in 99.9 percent victory for the Communist Party. Many in the audience have the same kind of background. They flee, they come to this country in the hopes of enjoying in that wonderful sunlight that this country provides and has provided for over two centuries now to those people who are oppressed, who come with dreams, who come simply to be treated fairly and be treated equally. And today, we're living it. We're living it because we have held another successful election. We should be very thankful for that. We have given another, you know, we've turned another page in the American democracy on a local level, which is the most important level. We should never forget that. We should always stress that all politics is local. Our residents should vote locally first before they vote for state, you know, state positions and federal positions because the way we vote locally impacts our lives the most. So I've said too much. I just want to get through the process because I'm very excited. I hope you are, too. So that's it. Welcome to our council meeting today.[315.02][315.02](Applause). Oral communications, which is the next item. I believe both cards are not for oral, not there for...
One of them is for oral communication, and Mr. Hoffman has asked to speak on item five.
Okay, very well. So Harry Zavos is our speaker. And how much time do you need, Dr. Zavos? Three minutes?
Oh, no, maybe two or three minutes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Sinanian, I wanted to personally express my appreciation, an appreciation which I'm sure is shared by many, many residents of Glendale, for the way that you've conducted the office of mayor. You have restored civility to these meetings. And while at the same time you have always exercised control over these meetings, you've also communicated a genuine respect and a desire to hear from your constituents regardless of whether they agree or disagree with you. What you have done is really encouraged public participation in the marketplace of ideas. It's so key to representative government. You have really set a gold standard for the mayor that follows you. I also wanted to say a word of congratulations to Councilwoman Paula Devine and to newly-elected Garton Garpetian for their successful campaign, and for the entire five members that will serve for the next year. I want to wish you the best in tackling what are some genuine problems for this city.
Thank you, Professor Zavos.[439.63][439.63](Applause). Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is new business. 4A is the City Clerk's report on elections canvas. 4A is a resolution of the canvas of the vote of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, April 7, 2015. 4A 2 is a resolution providing supplemental stipend for the precinct board inspectors. And I should note that on the resolution providing supplemental stipend for the precinct board inspectors, there is one typographical error on the resolution that says that you had a resolution on November 14, 2014, setting the stipends. It was actually November, the meeting of November 4, 2014, when that action was taken.
So there is no action that needs to be taken on this resolution, or there is?
There is.
There is, okay.
It says on it, it says 14 instead of November 4.
Very well.
And so the motion should be as revised.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call as revised?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. And that was on both on 4, that was on 4A 1 and 2? Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next, City Clerk oath of office to the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees. I'd like to ask Board members, and Board Members-elect, actually, Tartaglia and Perumian to the podium.[525.29][525.29](Phone rings). I will ask you to sign these upon the completion of your oath.
Can I get my certificate this time?
I know, we didn't get one.
You have it this time, I guarantee you that. All right. So I'll make this easy for you. We will, I will read the oath, and you will say whether you do or not. So please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly... I know, it's easier than the school board members earlier today. I made him repeat every single word. But for the risk of making sure that no one flubs this and it doesn't end up on YouTube...
Well, thank you so much.[585.41][585.41](Laughter).
We're gonna, I'll go frame. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[614.41][614.41](Applause).
I'd like to present you, Board Member Tartaglia, with your certificate of election, and Board Member Perumian with yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[634.66][634.66](Applause).
So that's what I was gonna do. So would the newly-elected and newly sworn-in Board, College Board members want to make comments?
They can do that, they could do that now or after we also introduce the school board members who we swore in earlier today. We could have them come up afterwards.
Sure. Let's do that. Let's introduce the school board members who are newly and not so newly being sworn in.
If I'd be the recognition of newly-elected members of the Glendale Unified School District who were sworn in earlier today, we have Board Members Freeman and Board Members Nahabedian, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
And congratulations, and congratulations to the City Council members, City Council Member-elect Garton Garpetian and Councilmember Paula Devine. It's really a pleasure for me to be here this evening. This election, more than any other election, for me, has been one where my observations has been that throughout Glendale and Glendale Unified, the voters have come together and communities who, communities have come together, communities who perhaps traditionally have voted in one way, have really been able to come together more so than ever before. That's been my personal experience this time around, and it really has warmed my heart. And I very much congratulate my colleague, my new colleague, Jennifer Freeman. And as we move forwards together, I want to first thank those of you on the dais who have supported my campaign, Mayor Sinanian, Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Devine, and my Councilmember-elect Garpetian. There are many folks I do want to take the opportunity to thank, and I'll thank them as groups. We had many volunteers in our campaign office, students from our different high schools, from Glendale Community College come and volunteer. It has meant a great deal to me personally that we've had so many young people who have come more than once to our office to campaign, and then come on Election Day as well to make a difference, that that sort of fervor and energy and inspiration exists in our city and continues to exist in our city. I also want to be able to thank those who have stepped up, and the community members and other electeds who have also supported the campaign. I also want to really send out a shout-out to my campaign manager, Francisco Bravo, who was at the GUSD oath of office, my treasurer, Coco de Mirjan, Fred Wucher, and also really want to thank all of those who made a really point of opening up their homes and inviting guests to have coffees and to have the opportunity to have, hold fundraisers. You know, when we campaign, at least for me, it's a time for assessment. It's a time to pause, and it's a time to take stock and to see how far we have come. And for me, I was able to really be able to take stock and see, we have a lot to be grateful for in Glendale schools. We have award-winning schools, we have our jazz bands, our marching bands. Glendale High School was in the opening ceremony, their dance group was in the opening ceremony on the first day of the year during the, during the rose parade. So a lot of wonderful things going on in Glendale Unified. We have positive behavioral interventions coming up that we're just beginning. And of course, you know, the one thing we're very proud of is the foreign language academies that where we have introduced seven different languages as an option, as an alternative for parents to choose for their kindergartner all the way up to their high school years. So here we are, many of us continuing together, and I am excited about the possibilities of us continuing to work together, not only with the city, but also continuing to work with our colleagues at Glendale Community College. And I congratulate all of the ones who did run, all of those who put themselves out there for the race in this election, because that took a lot, and congratulations to everyone who is being sworn in today. Thanks so much.[929.56][929.56](Applause).
I'm a little taller. Thank you. I'm, I am not quite as polished as Nari, but I'm here with that enthusiasm of being elected and still feeling overwhelmed by the amount of support that was given to me by our entire GUSD community, and really excited to take that support and move forward with that. I'm, I am just, I can't believe, I'm just very amazed right now. We have a great foundation of folks on our school board with strong educational knowledge, and seeing how we also have that type of a base on our college board, we have that type of experience on our city council, I'm really excited to see how we can take that and move that forward and really continue to work these entities together. There's a lot of great things happening in Glendale, and I'm really excited to be a part of it and look forward to continuing to develop those partnerships and develop those relationships and keep us moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.[991.13][991.13](Applause). Gentlemen.
Thank you very much, council members, and congratulations, Ms. Devine and Mr. Garpetian, on your election, and to my colleagues at GUSD for your election and reelection to the GUSD Board. I'm proud to have served on the college board for 10 years, and I wanted to thank the members of the Glendale community and the Glendale College District for putting their confidence in me one more time to serve for the next four years as your trustee at Glendale College. I also wanted to thank my family personally, my wife Carolyn, without whose insistence I wouldn't have even run for reelection, and my children Tara, Tade, and Sienna, who are here supporting me today. What I, the message I wanted to give to our residents of Glendale is that it's unfortunate that sometimes during elections, it is the college that's attacked, and it's the college's performance that's attacked. And I'm, I'm someone who's very passionate about what the college does for our community, and I'm proud to say that what we've accomplished during the last several years, myself along with my fellow board members, two of whom are here tonight, Dr. Armina Akopian and Mrs. Anita Quinones Gabrielian, that we can proudly shout this from rooftops, that it is Glendale College, not Pasadena and not Santa Monica, that's number one in transfers to four-year universities. We are number one in five out of seven categories statewide in terms of student success, and that's what we're working towards, that even in the leanest of times, we've made the college the success that it is. And so I dedicate the next four years of my term to making the college an even better place, so that four years from now, we'll look back and say, wow, we've come still a long way even though we had progressed very far. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you very much to the city of Glendale and to our community for reelecting me, and I look forward to serving you for another four years. Thank you.[1130.83][1130.83](Applause).
Mayor Sinanian, City Council, thank you so much. First, I want to echo the words of Mr. Zavos. I am so proud of you, Mayor Sinanian, that you have done so well for this city. Thank you very much for what you've done. I'd like to congratulate you, Paula Devine, on your reelection, Varta Garpetian, on your reelection, and I think we've, we have history here, the first husband and wife election in the city of Glendale. Congratulations to you both and to my colleagues as well. We're gonna have our reorganization tomorrow, so I have a lot to say in terms of what we've done, but I want to thank the citizens of Glendale. They came out, they saw the college, they saw that we are doing a good job, and they saw that we need to continue doing the good job. So I appreciate what you've done in reelecting me and reelecting my colleague, Dr. Perumian. I think he's a fantastic individual, and I've so enjoyed working with him for the last eight years, and my colleagues, Dr. Armineh Hagopian and Anita Quinones Gabrielian, and Ann Ransford, who's not here today. We have a wonderful city. We have the unusual ability of having both a college, a school district, and a city, and we work together well. And I am so proud of this city that we work together well and bring such good things to it. And I look, look forward to the next four years when we do Stengel Field, when we look at so many other things that we work together, when the school district opens the, the new center up at the top of mountain. We've got some exciting things going on in this city, and I'm really proud of it, and thank you so much for having us tonight. Thank you.[1229.83][1229.83](Applause).
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Well, listed on the agenda, and perhaps it's a bit redundant, but it is the recognition of other school officials, family, and friends present.
Very well. So I will start with the President of Glendale College Board of Trustees, Dr. Armineh Hagopian, who's in attendance.
No. College Board of Trustees, President is Dr. Viar.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Dr. Armineh Hagopian, yes.
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 And the President is, is Dr. Viar here as well?
Yeah, I was going to do that. I haven't missed him.[1273.33][1273.33](Laughter). So there we go.[1277.15][1277.15](Applause).
We have Anita Quinones Gabrielian, also with the college board.[1285.01][1285.01](Applause). We have our President of Glendale College, Dr. Viar.[1292.65][1292.65](Applause). Oh, he's downstairs. So, yes, our chamber is so full that he's downstairs. So.[1302.08][1302.08](Applause). Now, it says family as well. This, this item says not only just officials with family and friends present. I see Varta Garpetian with his family, and I'm sure you'll introduce them in your, when you're sworn in. Art Devine is in the audience, first row, Councilmember Paula Devine's husband. Yes, so, okay, thank you. Yes, Nairin Habedian's mother is in the audience, and aunt and cousin.[1338.15][1338.15](Laughter). Very well.[1340.15][1340.15](Applause). Vahay introduced his family, his beautiful family is in attendance. If I'm missing anyone, please let me know. My wife, my parents.[1355.15][1355.15](Laughter). They're here.[1357.15][1357.15](Applause). And my uncle and my uncle's wife, whom I don't see. But, so my uncle is here visiting from Armenia, and they're leaving in about a week. He's here to just observe American democracy at work. So there you have it.[1377.15][1377.15](Applause). I apologize if I missed anyone, although I think someone would let me know. My father, of course.[1386.01][1386.01](Laughter). Father, yes.
He'll forgive you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, without moving on to the comments by outgoing council members, because Councilmember Weaver is not with us this evening, we will now have, we are entitled to a brief recess if any of our visiting guests...
Would like to leave.
Would like to leave, or we can go directly to the oath of office to the newly-elected city officials.
I say we go on.
All right. In that case, I'd like to ask Councilmember Devine to step down from the dais and join me here at the podium, along with Councilmember-elect Garpetian.[1432.65][1432.65](Phone rings). It is just the oath of office in triplicate, so we can have it on record, but we're not signing any checks yet.[1471.65][1471.65](Laughter). Please raise your right hand, and upon me completing or the reading of the oath, affirm whether you do or not. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations. Please sign yours.[1513.21][1513.21](Applause). Councilmembers Garpetian, you may be seated. Councilmembers Devine and Garpetian will now be seated.
Your mayor will rearrange the seats.
Oh, okay.[1548.97][1548.97](Applause).
Would you like for me to go first?
Absolutely. You go first.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. It's been my honor and privilege to serve for the last 10 months as your council representative. The learning curve has been very steep, but not insurmountable. I'm so grateful to the 9,500 or so Glendale residents who listened to me, who believed in me, and who hired me to work for them for the next four years. I thank each and every one for your vote of confidence, and I promise to continue to do my very best for all of Glendale. I'm looking forward to a very exciting four years to come, in which I will have a part in the long-range planning for the future of Glendale. I will be working with my colleagues on projects such as the bridge to Griffith Park and the cap over the 134 freeway, both which will enhance our quality of life and bring us together by providing much-needed park space. I will also be supporting transit projects that will link all portions of our city together, north, south, east, and west, giving easy citywide access for all of our residents. However, at the same time, I will keep my focus on the issues that are currently my priorities and I think yours. I will continue to advocate for safe streets, including the education of our residents. We are beginning to see a change in behavior, but we must not stop. Cyclists and motorists must get the message. I will continue to advocate and support the process. Our state drought condition is of the utmost importance. With the concurrence of my colleagues, I will follow up on my campaign proposal to begin educating the public on alternative ways of water conservation, including the production of public service announcements that will explain the critical need to conserve and the public service announcements that will provide creative methods of conservation for this great source, resource that we need for our lives. I will also advocate for the revision of our codes that may inhibit or prevent the use of certain water conservation methods. Moving forward, responsible development is a priority. I will work towards the goal of homeownership projects and affordable housing projects to maintain a balanced community in which everyone has the opportunity to live regardless of their economic status. Preserving the integrity of our neighborhoods is a constant. Glendale prides itself in our beautiful neighborhoods, rich with historic homes. I will not compromise these neighborhoods. Recently, I attended a dog parade in Glen Oaks Park. It was hosted by the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association. There I met two, two people. They were former residents of Glendale. One lives in Pasadena, the other in La Crescenta. I couldn't help but ask them if they missed Glendale, and their answer was, yes, we do. And I asked, what was it about this city that you miss? And they answered, the feeling of this neighborhood. I don't ever want to, to lose that precious neighborhood connection. So that's the agenda. So that's the agenda I will be pursuing. My intent is to make decisions for the betterment of the entire city. We are a diverse community; there is no doubt about that, but we do not have to be a divided community. I will continue to involve and engage residents, homeowners, all stakeholders, as I have been doing for the past 10 months, in every decision I make. I guarantee that. As you all know, and as all of us know that have just run their campaigns, it takes a village to run for office. And I can, without reservation, say that I had the most outstanding village. Most of them are not here, but they're in another village. I think they're all taking a vacation from the hard work of the campaign. But anyway, starting with my campaign core team, which has worked tirelessly for the last four months, I have to recognize and thank Larry Miller, Elaine Wilkerson, Todd Blair, Garrett Biggs, Don Zachary, who's here tonight, Arlene Bedore, thank you, and Annette Kosker, and of course, my husband. I could never have done it without him. I would not be sitting here if it were not for the hard work, your dedication, and your belief in me. I must also recognize and thank all those who supported me along the way with donations, with endorsements, with signs, meet-and-greets, precinct walking, phone banking, and kind words of encouragement. Those were always so helpful. I shall never forget you. I'm looking forward to this term with optimism, with hope, and with a sincere desire to make Glendale an even more extraordinary city than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Divine. Councilmember Garpetian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you who made the effort to be present here tonight. I really, really, really appreciate it. I'd like to thank all of my family members, friends, voters, who supported me during this campaign, organizations, elected officials, our community leaders, who endorsed my candidacy. Also like to thank all the voters who participated in the democratic process and voiced their opinion by their votes. I'm humbled and honored for this vote of confidence, and I'm fully committed to work with my colleagues here to make a difference, to make Glendale even a better city. For more than a decade, I've been involved and have been active in our community by serving on various boards and commissions, served on many nonprofit organizations, and volunteered countless hours to improve the quality of life in our city. Now, I'm truly honored to have the opportunity to serve our entire community in a bigger capacity as your new council member. During my campaign, I made my position clear on different issues such as budget, public safety, utility rates, overdevelopment, and affordable housing needs. I intend to pursue these issues together with my colleagues with all the due diligence they deserve. As I promised, I will be accessible and have an open-door policy for everyone. We may not agree on every issue discussed, but I will always listen to you and treat all of you with respect. That's a promise. As a newly elected council member, I believe it is my obligation to serve the entire community without prejudice. And remember, I'm still a resident of this city, an active member of this community, who cares about the issues affecting all of us. As a councilperson, the voters have simply given me a mandate to work harder with the community, for the community. For my fellow council members, I pledge I will bring a cooperative attitude to this dais and will seek points of agreement where we can work together to address any issues for the betterment of our city. And to the management and all the hard-working staff members of our city, including our fire department and police department, I have a word of encouragement to look behind the daily routine for a vision of the future. All of us are simply serving this community. And both in our daily dealings as well as our long-term plan, we need to look forward with hope and perspectives that we shape and create in a proactive manner. You know, when I was thinking about what to say tonight, and I was putting my thoughts together, I had a call from a friend of mine, and he said, don't make this like an Oscar, and you want to go around and thank everybody under the moon who helped you. I said, you are right, but I have to thank my family members. So to my lovely wife, Arminia, thank you for being the important part of my life for the last 25 years. Your unconditional love and positive personality is the backbone of our family, and it was the backbone of my campaign. And that's why we had a very, very positive campaign. Thank you for your noble character as a wife, as a mother, and a public servant on the Board of Education. Who would have thought two members of a family elected at the same time? My three children who are here tonight, I don't know what to say. You are my heroes. I thank you for being patient with me for the last six months, actually, a year. And I thank you for that. My mother, Mary, is in the audience tonight. I want to thank my mother and my late father, who passed away 30 years ago. You have given me a good life, and I thank you for everything you've done for me, Mom. To my two sisters and my close family members, all my in-laws, my brother-in-laws, my sister-in-laws, everybody who's here, all my friends here, more than half the room is my friends here tonight, for believing in me and for supporting me throughout the years in all my efforts and endeavors. Last but not least, a special appreciation goes to my campaign team. I have some of the volunteers we had. We had over 80 volunteers in our campaign, our staff, and my special thanks goes to my two managers, campaign managers, Arutin Hartunian and Vilenc Kachaturian, who took the time from their work and families and worked on my campaign. And I'd like to add that they have young families. It was a 24/7, non-stop effort. I also have my uncle here in the audience, Emil, who was a father for me when my father passed away, and my uncle's wife, Silvia, is here tonight. Thank you for being here. Today is the day of celebration and ceremonies. Tomorrow, the work will begin. For the next four years, I will be your uncompromising voice on this dais, addressing any matter that concerns the well-being of our citizens and our community. Together, we can and we must make sure that Glendale remains a jewel city. Thank you for being here. God bless you. God bless the city of Glendale, and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you, Councilmember Garpetian. By the way, also in the audience, right behind Mr. Lebov, is former council member, multiple-time mayor of the city of Glendale, Frank Intero. Okay, with that, I have my parting comments. Dear friends and fellow Glendelians, it's hard to believe that it's been a year since I became mayor of our great city and two years since I got elected to council. This past year went by very fast and was a very eventful one. In the past year, I had the honor and privilege to be your mayor, a task which came with much responsibility and one that I took very seriously. Past year, we were able to build upon the progress that we had made after the economic downturn, continuing the recovery, which in turn resulted in a successful fiscal year. We also saw the completion of some major projects in downtown Glendale, the groundbreaking of others. Most importantly, Glendale continued its positive trajectory aimed at the improvement of its overall economic health, the strengthening of our community groups, and the introduction of significant long-term projects. These positive results that we recorded this year were summarized in my State of the City address, which there is no need to repeat tonight. However, we must continue in the same spirit, with the goal of keeping up with the developments and technologies, never falling behind the cutting edge, keeping a pace with economic developments and with the complete realization that as a city, we're not an island unto ourselves, and must act locally as well as regionally. For most of our problems are shared by our neighboring municipalities and municipalities in the region in general. To that end, I worked with my colleagues, both on Glendale City Council and our neighboring cities, with the full realization that thinking regionally and acting locally would be to our benefit. I'm very excited that Glendale City Council began the process of the establishment of a local IT incubator, which will fit perfectly with the already existing robust IT sector in Glendale, provide a guarantee that we do not fall behind our neighboring cities in the traction of businesses involved in the IT sector, and make Glendale even more attractive for such businesses in the future. Much like you, I love this city. I end my years mayor with the full realization that we, all of us, residents of the city of Glendale, want the same basic things in life and have similar expectations of our city: good services at an affordable price, and short, medium, as well as long-term planning to make sure our city improves and gets better as time progresses. I thank my colleagues for their professionalism and dedication to our city. I thank our residents for being the best residents that a city can dream about. Thank our staff for their hard work and dedication. I especially thank our outgoing council member, Dave Weaver, for his years of service to Glendale, and wish him the best in his retirement. I want to congratulate all the elected officials who were sworn in today. Congratulations to Glendale Unified School Board members, Nairi Narpetian and Jennifer Freeman. I think we can work a lot together, a lot more than I have in the past, despite my best wishes. And I also want to congratulate our newly, not-so-newly sworn-in Glendale College Board Trustee members, Vahay Perumian and Tony Tartalia. I'm very inspired by the plans that you have for our college, and I absolutely agree that the degree of success is not in your moment, but in the results that our students who are involved in Glendale College enjoy as a result of attending the college. So thank you for all the work that you've done in the past collectively. You also, Ms. Quinones, you also, Ms. Arminia, and look forward to working with you in the future. I want to congratulate Paula Divine on a very, very good nine months serving as council member, and congratulate, obviously, on getting reelected. Very well deserved. Proud to have endorsed you. Also want to congratulate Vartan Garpetian on his election to council. Proud to have endorsed you, too. But all jokes aside, of course, I look forward to working with both of you. I'm sure we will work together and cooperate on most matters. No two people agree on everything, but I think one thing we agree upon is our love for Glendale. Mr. Garpetian, you and I also share one thing, which is we have children in the Glendale Unified School District, and I think that's very important and often forgotten, that our schools, the health of our schools, and the education of our kids is probably the most valuable and precious thing, at least the parents, those that are parents in the city of Glendale enjoy. And not to say that we're going to be in your business, but I think there's more of a nexus now for us to work together on anything that's related to our schools. So thank you. Finally, and most importantly, I thank all of our residents for the honor of serving you. I did my best, because you deserve nothing but the best. Whether I lived up to your expectations, you will be the judges of that. I end my mayorship evermore in love with the city of Glendale and look forward to be your humble servant for the next two years. We have a speaker who wants to go before item five, and that speaker is Albert Hoffman. How much time do you need, Mr. Hoffman? Good evening.
Just a couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes, three minutes.
Mayor Sinanian and Councilmember Al Hoffman. I'm a native of this great city and have seen many changes going on. I want to follow up on what Mr. Savo said about Mayor Sinanian. You did a great job for us. I've mentioned that to you on a few occasions. And I really believe that you deserve another term as a mayor. I know it's unprecedented, but it's an unprecedented thing, but maybe that's what we should be doing, especially in the light that the other two eligible persons, the Councilwoman Friedman and Councilmember Najarian, are running for, are seeking higher office. I think it'd be very appropriate that you serve another term. You definitely brought us back to civility, as Mr. Savo said. You took over. The council was, it was awful. We came up here to speak, and we were put down. We couldn't speak. We were cut off. The bell goes off, boy, you're out of here. Even if you had something important to say. You let people speak. You let them speak their mind. I think you deserve another term, and I hope that the council considers that when they take this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I appreciate the sentiment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you turn over your mayorship, I think I'm the only person who hasn't written something, looking around. But I didn't want to sit silent all night, so I did want to first congratulate all of the newly sworn-in electives. I feel really, really good about the future of the schools and the community college. And on a more personal note of the board that I sit on, on the city council, I've worked with Mr. Garpetian on the design review board, so it kind of feels a little familiar up here. And of course, with Ms. Divine over the past 10 months. And I feel really, really positive about the direction of this council. I think we have a really good group sitting up here, and I'm really optimistic and hopeful and looking forward to coming in tomorrow and starting this new era. I think it's going to be really, really productive and really professional, and I know that you're going to represent this city really well, and that we're going to have a very professional council that really shows the world what Glendale's all about, you know, and all of its diversity and in all of its issues. So I'm looking forward to that. And to the mayor, to Mr. Sinanian, I want to echo what the speaker said about your professionalism and the way that you ran the meetings and your respect for the public, and something that maybe the public doesn't appreciate, but you can only know from this side of the dais, which is the respect you gave your colleagues, and the way that you always made us feel empowered to say what we wanted to say and valued. And you really, it was really a pleasure to have you sitting at the helm of each and every meeting. They were very well-run. I always felt very comfortable up here, and I just hope whoever replaces you lives up to the precedent that you've set. And I also want to call out one of the initiatives that you put into place that people had talked about for years, and you were the first one to do it, which was the city council in your neighborhood, which I have to say, worked so extremely well, better than I ever envisioned it to work, and I hope that we continue that tradition, because I think it was a wonderful addition. Don't you all agree that that was a wonderful addition to the city council in the last year? So thank you. I hope you enjoy your relaxation now of not having to run the meetings, being able to sit back a little bit. But congratulations and thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Really appreciate it. On to next item.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that sentence was your last action as mayor, because I get to run the meeting from this point. The business before the council is the selection of a mayor, and I, as a chair, will now entertain nominations for that office.
I'll nominate Arun Ajarian.
A second. Although I want to, I'd like to make a comment before we take a vote, is I really, truly appreciate what Mayor Sinanian has done. I agree with Mr. Savo and his comments, but I think Mr. Councilmember Najarian would be as positive and as cooperative as any other mayor that we have, and I want to commend Mr. Sinanian for his really good work. A second to your motion.
All right. Are there any further nominations for the office of mayor? Hearing no further nominations, we will proceed to the roll call. This is for the nomination of councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpetian?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
I have to ask. Councilmember Sinanian?
Yes.
All right. I now declare councilmember Najarian the duly-elected mayor of the city of Glendale.
And my first act as mayor will be to present former Mayor Sinanian this lovely decorative gavel, it's a gavel, correct? Crystal gavel, which he will proudly display on his desk, and be a fond reminder of the one year that you led our great city of Glendale. Congratulations. Comments, Mr. Clerk, at the appropriate moment?
Mayor Najarian, it's now your meeting, so...
Well, thank you.
It is comments.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the new mayor, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone. First of all, thank you to my colleagues for bestowing upon me this great honor. I know that each and every one of you, right now, have the ability and the perseverance and the intellect and the personality to run this city, as well as Mayor Sinanian, and I hopefully will. As councilmember Friedman said, we do have a very talented group up here, and we are going to have a great year going forward. I'd also like to thank the residents who voted for me two years ago. And Mr. Hoffman's concept of a two-year mayor, isn't that outdated? Because in the not-too-distant past, we had a process whereby the candidate receiving the highest number of votes in the particular election would get a two-year term, and it would proceed. So if you look at some of our mayor photos, we have two years next to each one of them. But I think, in the wisdom of the council, we decided to limit the term of the mayor to one year, for several reasons. I think a good turnover is good, and it gives colleagues and councilmembers who were not the top vote-getters a chance to share in the responsibility and the duties of leading this city. I'd like to thank my family that's here today. I have my two sons in the back, looking at each other and getting embarrassed. My son Alexander, who is a junior at Occidental College, and next to him is my youngest son, Christopher, who is graduating from St. Francis High School and will be attending Xavier University in the fall. Thank you, guys. I also have my mom and my dad, who have been great supporters, and if you've been around the city, you've seen them around, and they're very active. And, you know, if we had a position of honorary mayor, probably my mom would be the best candidate for that. Don't worry, she tells me what to do often enough. You don't have to worry about that. I also have my brother Arman and his wife Nyra, who are here. Thank you for coming. My brother Rafi and his wife Arda, who is at the Glendale Community College, so we've got some of that chemistry going. She keeps me up to post, posted on all the comings and goings. And their young boy, Shant. Hi, Shant. Right on. I also, unfortunately, my wife, Paul Mira, could not attend this evening. She is a news anchor at Mundo Fox, and she's doing the 10 o'clock news, so she cannot make it, but maybe I'll bring her to council on another day. But, in her place, I have her mother, my mother-in-law, Norma Perez. Hello, Norma. Thank you. And her very best friend, who is, if you watch sports on Spanish ESPN, the Dodgers liaison. And where's Dan Bell? Dan, you should get to know this young lady. Diana Alvarado. She's been a great support. Thank you, everyone. Did I forget any of my family? Okay, so thank you all for coming. Well, it's a good news, bad news thing. I am now the most senior member of the city council, and which is not to say I'm the senior citizen member of the council, but I've been here the longest, since we lost Dave Weaver. And I also would like to thank Dave Weaver for his 18 years on council. Love him or disagree with him, he brought a certain perspective to the council that I appreciated, and he contributed to our discussions and made us think about things just a little bit differently each and every time we came to an issue. Again, I'd like to thank outgoing mayor Azare Sinanian. He did a very good job as mayor. I appointed him to the CDBG Commission prior to his mayorship, prior to his being elected to council, so I knew, we had seen him in action, and he was a very, very known quantity. But he and I share deep roots. I want everyone to know that. Deep roots. He and I both are USC Law School graduates. So I don't think in the history of Glendale, we've had two SC Law School graduates, back-to-back, be mayor. Now, Dave Weaver is gone, he can't, you know, fly the USC flag, so I think Mayor Sinanian and myself are going to be picking that up and waving that banner whenever we can, as well as the city manager, who's on the esteemed faculty of the USC Public Policy Institute. So, I'm glad you're all here. Let's appreciate city councils around the country for what they are. They are really the front line of democracy. If any of you have a complaint or a compliment, you can come right up to the dais and take a card and give us your darndest three minutes or five minutes' worth, and tell us that, you know, where to go, or tell us that we're the greatest thing since sliced bread. And you can't do that with any other office. You can't go to our state assembly people and complain like that. You can't go to Congressman Adam Schiff and complain to anyone from Congress. You can't go, you know, go on the way up. You just can't have that level of contact. When we go to the grocery stores, or when we go to the soccer fields with our kids, or to schools, there isn't an opportunity where someone, a parent or another resident, doesn't grab us and let us know what they think. So we really are the front line. I think we're really the hardest workers in the democratic system. I'm getting some applause. I think that's true. And that goes not just for the council, but for the college board members and the school board members. You really have to realize, we never leave this job. This really is a full-time job. Let's not mention about that measure that didn't pass, but really, we spend so many hours a week in this job. We take it so seriously, because we all have the best interests of Glendale in heart. And one thing is for certain, this council gets the job done. There are no issues that we kick down the road. There are no issues that we try to avoid. We sit down, we... Let's talk about development, for an example. I was very much against a lot of the big development. There were colleagues who were very much for it. For what it's worth, we sat down and we talked about it, we argued about it, we analyzed it, and we came up with a decision, and we moved forward. So that is something that we are proud of, that we deal with the tough issues and we move forward. So, I've got a year as mayor, and let me give you a brief overview about some of the things we're going to be doing. And it's, I mean, we want to do a lot of things. Each one of us has ideas and programs and concepts that we'd like to bring to the city. The problem is, we are limited by our budget. So, the theme, I think, that you'll see in this upcoming year is a balance. Balancing our vision that we'd like to bring to Glendale against the realities of the financial situation. And we're doing a little bit better this year than previous years, but we still have financial constraints. And when we sit down during the budget cycle in a month or so, that's exactly what we are going to be doing. We're talking about funding programs, about funding departments, and about funding services. So, a lot of our discussion is going to be balancing our vision versus the reality. But this year, I think we can say that we're really going to be focusing on infrastructure projects. I know, it's not the most exciting sort of thing to tell you about the Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion Project. Boring, I know that. But these are the type of things that we're going to be dealing with. We're going to be dealing with the Grayson Power Plant. Should we keep it? Should we sell it? Should we farm it out to Edison? These are things we're going to be discussing. We'll be having a report, and we very much want your input. We'll be talking about the Shoal Canyon landfill. We may be getting some very innovative waste diversion technologies, which will actually create almost zero waste. Every bit would be recycled and put into either a biological or a recycled element. So we won't be just piling level upon level in Shoal Canyon. We're going to be redoing the Grandview Electrical Substation. Of course, we've got the big, I think it's a $15 million central library renovation. And as the mayor mentioned, technology is key to Glendale. We're going to be completely revamping our IT platform in the city, so we can work more efficiently, and we can work smarter, and we can get more information to you, the residents. And you saw that last week or the week before about this great new website we have, where you can find out exactly what's going on in any department. You can actually find out what's going on in any one particular property that you may have a question on. You just click on it, and you can see all the permits, and hopefully your questions will be answered. We continue to be one of the best cities in all of Southern California. And I said several years ago that Glendale is a premier city, and every day that goes by, I feel stronger and stronger about our place in the hierarchy of cities. I can't name many cities that are better than Glendale, that have cleaner streets, that have better schools, that have better colleges, that have better shopping. We've got great shopping, that have better businesses flocking into Glendale. Our homes and our neighborhoods are just incredibly pristine, and it makes me proud. This is what makes Glendale a great, great city. There are few cities, few cities, that can match our police department, that can match our fire department. We all should be extremely proud of Glendale. Are we the perfect utopia? No. No, by no means. We're not a utopia, but we are working hard to make Glendale the very best city that it can be. Now, someone mentioned the 134 freeway cap. I think councilmember Devine did. And so that's a cap that's going to go over the 134 freeway between Central and Brand. And it's going to cost a lot of money, but I'm going to work hard to try and find the money to put that cap in place. That'll give us great park space, and, you know, unfortunately, when the 134 freeway came through, it really cut our community in half, with very few north-south streets. We lost a lot of homes. But hopefully, this type of freeway cap can make up for that devastating route. We're going to work on making Montrose our jewel of the north. Montrose, the very best community that it can be, through our Vision 2020 strategic plan. And our planners, and Darlene Sanchez is working right now with all the stakeholders up there, to find out exactly what the folks in Montrose want. We, as a council, do not want to impose on anyone in Montrose, whether you're a retailer, whether you're an owner, a homeowner, a landowner. We want to hear from you what you want, and we are here to try and help you make your community the very best. I hope, very soon, to be cutting the ribbon on a new BRT. It's a Bus Rapid Transit Route that's going to connect the Orange Line and the Red Line in North Hollywood with the Gold Line in Pasadena, with stops at our very important Bob Hope Airport. This will be an express service, so with one stop, at the most, from Glendale, you're going to be able to get to a light rail either, should you choose to go to Pasadena, you can hit the Gold Line; should you choose to go towards the west, you'll be able to hit the Red Line, and then connect to the whole metro system. And I'm still on the Metro Board, and it does give me a great opportunity to bring transportation funding to Glendale. I look very forward to bringing some of those projects in. We are going to continue, I guess the theme of this evening is collaboration, with our partners at the community college, whether we do something across the street or not, and with our friends at the school district, where we can hopefully meet some of the unmet needs of our youth for recreational programs at some of the fine facilities at the school, and maybe we can help with the funding and create the, you know, the process and legal framework to make sure that there's no, that there's no problem. And, you know, no child left out of a field or a game that he wants to play. We have turned the corner from the Great Recession. They called it the Great Recession, and it was pretty bad for a few years. In fact, the city of Glendale cut our workforce by 25 percent, from about 2,000 employees down to 1,500. Many of you don't know that, because your services were not lacking. And that's a testament to our department heads, and everyone down the line, to the worker that helps you at the park, to our sanitation services, to the person at the front desk in planning and building permits, to our police officers, to our fire department. They worked their butts off to make sure that you had the same level of service. Just imagine, we lost a quarter of our workforce, 25 percent gone, but very few of you could say, oh, well, now the service in Glendale is lacking. It isn't. So I very much applaud the work of our employees, and the person who helped us make the hard decisions, our city manager. He came up, and he had the hard job of identifying the areas and the positions that were not going to be refilled. So I do want to, I do want to give a round of applause to our city manager. You do a good job. I'm also going to work with my colleagues to fight Sacramento, to keep their paws off our money. They have a lot of our money, they don't want to give it back, but we're going to get it back from them, and we're going to work as hard as we can to make sure we get those funds, so we can give it right back to you, give it right back to the community, to make sure that your services don't waver in the least bit. Well, if all this happens, and I hope it does, I can assure you that a year from now, we can look back and say, we had a pretty good year. And I think that's the best that any mayor could hope for, looking forward, once he has taken the seat. So, I look forward to being your mayor. I look forward to working with my colleagues closely. You know, as a mayor, you can't be so much of the firebrand that I used to be when I was sitting over there. I was, I was, I was very, I was quite an advocate. My job is to run the meeting and to make sure all the thoughts and analysis is developed, and we hear from all of you, and that's what we're going to do. And we will have a great year. And I thank, again, my colleagues for trusting me, and you, the public. Hopefully, I'll be getting your support in the year to come. We've got a great city, we're going to have a great year, and that concludes my remarks. Is there anything else on the agenda, Mr. City Clerk?
Just a motion and a second to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
And we meet tomorrow for our first full, full meeting, full regular meeting, at 6:00 PM, and I invite you all to attend or to tune in. Thank you, and have a great evening, everyone.